...and Central LTD. This is just a unique agreement that the district has with a small portion of land, under a half an acre, that's adjacent to the railroad tracks behind our property here at Menucha Primary Center. And that allows the district to lease this land. Our playground utilizes a portion of it and also allows access to the fields. So this is something that will come to the board, continue to come to the board every two years. It's a very nominal amount of $450 annually. And then the second one is the consolidated district plan. This is a requirement by the Illinois State Board of Education. And this essentially outlines requirements that we must attest to that allows us to apply to many of the federal grants that become available upon completion of this. So Title I, II, Title III, IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Part B, and IDEA preschool grants. So that is also a standard item.
And I also just wanted to note, once the disposal of property would get, were to get approved in the consent agenda, that would be shared out with the community to allow for those to be dispersed if somebody wanted them?
That is correct. It is years and years of awards and trophies because as you saw this evening, we have a very strong tradition of strong programs, athletics, activities. So these awards and trophies will become available to anyone in the community who would like to keep a memento. And we'll make that post and let the community know about that. But we have a big, big amount of these things in stock, so we're doing a little spring cleaning.
I don't know if you guys have ever seen that, but there's a lot. I got a two or one.
There's hundreds. So a little bit of nostalgia for somebody who maybe won that 1972 championship that you'd like to put that on your mantle at home. Check out the list and come on out and pick it up.
Possibly what we can do going forward with the trophies, the cross-country and track coach of Menucha High School, what he does because of that, he saw someone throwing him out one time, and then he's like, "I'm not gonna let that happen." So every year when he does his banquet for the students, he'll give them away. So possibly we can work that in. So like, let's say it was the second place of the Yorkville invite, he'll give it to one of the eighth graders or whatever it might be, right? But this is in high school. So now it's going to the kids that earned them, right? Versus, I mean, hopefully people will step up, but, so we don't have this problem in the future.
I think that's a great idea.
Coach Cumbers, so we can, if you want to reach out to him.
That's great. Yeah, we display the really special ones, and those will continue to be displayed in our schools. But that's a great idea to give them to the athletes as they're, you know, leaving the season. And I think that's a great way to keep that going forward. So I like that.
I have another thought on that, too. Do we have digital documentation of all, is there like a photo of every award that we're going to get rid of? I mean, create a digital document of them, which could be compressed on a computer and we don't need a storage room?
That's another great idea. Right now, we just have a physical inventory. One of our employees from the business office helped us out creating a whole list. I don't believe there's a photo attached to it.
That would be nice.
Hall of Fame?
Okay.
Like a Hall of Fame page. All right. With that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second. Let's do a roll call, please.
Mr. Satorius?
Yes.
Mrs. Munson?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
Mr. Schaumberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Teneli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye. Motion carries. We will move forward to action items. 4.01 Asphalt Seal Coating Bid Recommendation. Mrs. Robinson and Mrs. Teneli?
I just want to interject one time before we move on to action. With the approval of the personnel items, I did want to note that the board has just approved the employment of Mrs. Julia Lowry, a seasoned educator and leader, as our new assistant principal effective next school year at Menucha Intermediate School. You can just stand up and be recognized, Miss Julia. Welcome. Welcome. She did wear Menucha blue, yes. And we're excited that she's moving back to her hometown area to join us here in Menucha 201. Welcome. All right. Now we can move on to action. So Mary Robinson, Chief School Business Official, with an Asphalt Seal Coating Bid Recommendation.
So just in years past, we did put a bid out for asphalt. This year, we focused on Menucha Elementary, Jones, Anoxable, and the South Maintenance Shed. If you're interested in the specifics in the PDF that's attached, there's actual maps and it circles out exactly what portions we'll be doing. We put an ad in the paper. We received three bids. Oak Lawn Construction came in at $141,200. Oak Lawn has won the bid the last two years. We've been very happy with them, and so we would recommend awarding the bid to Oak Lawn Construction.
Questions or concerns? Go.
I didn't catch it earlier. Didn't we just do Jones, like, not last year, but the year before?
So, yeah, and you can kind of actually tell, we did sections. So if you look, there's a five-year plan to get all of, like, basically every year in five years is just a rotation. But last year, it would have been other sections. And then if you look at what's circled in Jones, you could even tell from the picture that it needs to be done.
So we did like the basketball court, and now we're doing the parking?
Yeah. And you can tell they're actually, like, they look darker on the picture that they're already completed, so.
And how often does it need to be done? You said every five years?
Well, we're on a cycle. And I don't, I wouldn't want to say that everything gets done every five years. Because this cycle Glenn has started, and he's been here three years. So I don't know if it's always been, but our goal is every, every year now to put a section of the budget to keep them up to date. So moving forward, something will get done every year.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? If not, I need a motion to approve the Asphalt Seal Coating Bid Recommendation as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the Asphalt Seal Coating Bid Recommendation as presented.
I'll second.
The best presenter.
Mr. Schaumberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Teneli?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, moving on to 4.02, Wilson Foundations Level III Materials.
All right. Thank you. So we'd like to, I'd like to recommend to the board of ed to approve the attached purchase order agreement with Wilson language in the procurement of our Foundations Level III. So reason being, we, we know our reading scores and ELA scores aren't quite what we want them to be. That is something nationwide that is occurring, which is why you're seeing a lot of states coming up with literacy plans. And kind of starting to dive into our data a little bit, we had a previous phonics program that was K-2, and it taught all the phonics skills between K-2. With foundations that we currently have for our pre-K to 2, pre-K is just a little bit exposure, but they really start going into, starting to see some mastery of phonics skills in kindergarten. They have, they have a K-3 program. We purchased the K-2 portion of it and never purchased the, the third grade level of it. So kids are missing some of key phonics skills, ghost letter, glue sounds like ing, eng, ong, whether you use TCH or CH, which there's just a lot of kind of hanging chads there. And we're kind of leaving it up to chance whether some of our kids are getting that instruction or not. And research is suggesting that, you know, explicit phonics instruction isn't the only piece, but it's a very important piece in reading to learn and learning to read, which is why I'm coming forth with the recommendation to purchase the last year of the program, Foundations Level III, for our third grade teachers and our students. So it would give our teachers a resource to use across the district. Our students would have equitable access to that resource and those teachings. It, I didn't feel like there was a need to pilot other programs because we already have the K-2 version of it. It just makes sense. Kids know the repetition of the lessons and how they learn it. It just makes sense for us to purchase the last portion of it. I don't, it's not going to fix all of our reading scores or anything, but I do think it's a very important piece of what we can do to improve our literacy skills of our students. So with that, I'd like to see what kind of questions you guys have.
I do have a question. Could you clarify, the previous program we had, it was K-2, and this is a K-3 program. Does it teach more than the K-2, or is it spread out over more years than the K-2 program?
Spread out.
Do you know, and I know this was before you were in this position, do you know why we didn't purchase the third grade at the time we did K-2?
I've been told a couple of different things. I think originally, we weren't sure we needed it. And then after we purchased this, we recognized it, and our teachers have been doing a great job of trying to supplement it. My understanding was that once we recognized there was a need for it, the determination of where those minutes were going to come from was a big point of discussion, and it was just left up like, well, let's just not, we're not going to do it right now because we don't, we don't have time to get the minutes from. So my suggestion is we're going to use our ELA minutes. We have, have a potential idea to take a little bit of wit and wisdom minutes that we're allocated that, and a little bit of our CST, which is kind of small group, second dose intervention work and enrichment work for our kids. We're going to take a little bit of those to have an actual allotment of minutes for this Level III foundations.
So just to close and clarify, this is the third year of their, the third grade? This is the totality of the foundations program then?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I love the idea.
And we're sure we're, we want to stay with this one and not go back to the one that does it all in two years?
Yes. We, our phonics skills were still a struggle there, and it was too, like, we tried to work this year. We added some things in our second grade one to see if we could kind of mesh it together and move things maybe a little faster to get some of these things taught. We still couldn't get it all taught, and we had mixed results with trying to embed some of these in. I think doing it right at the pace that Foundations is suggesting is where we'll get a little more bang for our buck. It allows more kids time to master, but then it'll also allow us, we've got the curriculum to intervene if we need to give a kid a second dose of the phonics, or even if we see in fourth grade, kids are still struggling, we have this piece of instruction to help them along the way.
Okay. So the, this price here covers us for how long?
It covers...
Like, next school year?
Almost everything is, is included. The only thing we would need to look to purchase, I think it's about $4,000, is the student supplemental, like, the student consumables. That is sets of 20 for all the teachers. So essentially, everything they would have, it would just be the student consumables. I think it's like $90 for a 10-pack that we would have to purchase every year. That was a good question. Any others?
What kind of materials are involved in this program?
So there's a lot. There's, so they have special, like, ways to teach phonics. So if you look at the research, there's, like, there's a lot of brain science behind how kids kind of absorb literacy skills, and phonics is a big piece of that. So they do, there's, there's different tiles for trying to match sounds up together. There's magnet boards so they can work on. There's boards to work on how to write the words and put them together. There's a whole lot of materials, and then it's explicit phonics instructions for the staff to kind of be trained and utilize, because the research is saying with the science of reading, like, there are, there's an explicit way to teach phonics. So it really hits that home for the teachers to understand it, and then the kids. And because the kids already have kind of the rhymes and the methods memorized from doing it for several years, it just kind of flows naturally for the kids a little bit. There's a lot of materials that, that go with it.
All right. Thank you.
That pretty much answered my question also. Are there tangible products, which you said there are? Is there also a digital component?
Yes. So there's more digital, I mean, there's things that the kids could do if they wanted to, but there, it's called a fun hub that the teachers have access to, to be able to pull and utilize, too. Whether they were doing whole group instruction or small group, there's a lot of different ways that you could unfold that for kids in the classroom.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other questions or comments, I need a motion to approve purchasing Wilson Foundations Level III materials as presented.
I'll motion to approve the Foundations Level III materials as presented.
I'll second.
Mrs. Teneli?
Aye.
Mr. Schaumberg?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye. Motion carries. We will move on to discussion and information items, summer programming.
Okay. We're gonna have a brief overview of the summer programming that has a lot of hands in busy preparation, because we are just about 25 short days from wrapping up this school year. So Mrs. Forkel, who is our assistant principal at Walnut Trail Elementary, is also doing summer program coordinator work for us as well. She's gonna give us an overview. Mrs. Forkel.
Thank you. So I'm just here to give you guys a brief overview of the different programs that we are offering this summer. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions. So similar to last year, we are offering about four different options. Course Recovery, Camp Menucha in both reading and math, Summer Enrichment, and Menucha Bridge. Course Recovery is designed for students who have not yet met the criteria to pass a certain class during the school year. These are typically your fifth through eighth grade students that need a little bit extra support to get that passing grade. Camp Menucha and Camp Math, or Camp Math and Camp Reading are for our current kindergarten through fourth grade students. Both camps offer engaging activities designed to help students build their skills as well as confidence within a smaller group setting. Class sizes are typically 10 to 15 with one teacher, and if possible, we try and push in some support staff, whether that be an aide, ML support, special ed support if available, just to get the students more practice on those various skills. New this year, we are looking to have some high school students who may need service hours or similar to our GAVC program volunteer during the camps. So we're in communication with the high school to see if we can get that rolling. Summer Enrichment is...
So are these all, are you recommending kids to go into this, or is it an option for the parent?
There's both.
Especially like camp recovery as far as?
Yeah, absolutely. So Course Recovery is recommended. They have to do that to pass the course. For the Camp Menucha reading and math camps, teachers can certainly recommend students and reach out to parents and strongly suggest that their student attend. Otherwise, students can just sign up if they're interested, or parents can sign their student up.
Good.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are the camp math and camp reading typically for learners who might have backslide through the summer, or is there an...
Yeah, it's really a variety. So we, we see a variety. Sometimes, yes, there are struggling students. Sometimes it's students who are excelling in those areas and just really enjoy one or the other and, and want to hang out with friends and, yeah, do some more schoolwork during the summer.
Okay.
Summer Enrichment is for students who are currently in fifth through eighth grade. The class offerings are designed to enhance students' knowledge through skills beyond the typical curriculum. So this year, we are offering 14 different classes for students, giving them the opportunity to explore new subjects, develop their interests, and enhance their social skills in a more laid-back, relaxed environment. Last year, students could only sign up for one class. This year, we're encouraging students to sign up for two classes so that they can stay for both sessions and just have that additional time to explore different activities or take certain classes with their friends to encourage that participation.
And how many students for this are they...
So last year, we had 109 students that participated. This year, as of this morning, I think we had 54 signed up. Registration opened last week, and it goes through May 16th.
And you all have instructors for all of these activities already?
Yeah, absolutely. So we sent out a survey to staff about what are you interested in teaching, and staff fill out that survey and submit it back. So last year's offerings were a little bit different than this year's. So right now, when I looked this morning, fishing was the number one class that students wanted to take, and that was not offered last year. So it really is dependent on what staff is willing and wants to teach and share that with students.
It's a good offering.
And then the last offering is Menucha Bridge. So these classes are designed to help students transition or bridge to their next school year level. The classes review key concepts from the previous school year while building on and introducing concepts that will be covered in the upcoming school year. All of the courses are online, taught through asynchronous lessons, videos, activities. And then teachers have weekly office hours where they can check in with students. Students can ask questions. They can check student work and provide that feedback for them. This year, we are offering for the fifth through eighth grade, multilingual newcomer bridge program. So students who are still acquiring those language skills could enroll in that program. Just a timeline for you guys to see of when all of these offerings are taking place. So starting right after school gets out after Memorial Day, we kick off with Course Recovery and Camp Math. That following week is Camp Reading, then Enrichment, and Summer Bridge begins middle of July. Do you guys have any other questions?
I know we saw great success with a lot of these last year, so I'm excited to see again kind of the data, what comes out of students that did these programs, and then how that translates into the coming year.
Absolutely.
So how are we communicating this to the, to the parents?
Yeah, sure. So Jalisa has sent out, I don't know if she's still here, has sent out various communications. She made some graphics for us. All of the principals are also communicating that in their weekly communications to families. I've done some mass emails as well to parents, just, this is the course offerings, this is how you sign up through Power School, just to promote student interest.
And the instructors and teachers, they're receiving stipends or...
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. All right. Thank you, you guys. Appreciate it. Okay. We are going to move on to board topics. I know Mrs. Teneli had one or two?
Oh, yes.
Before you start?
I have a bunch. I'm just kidding. I didn't know that Ashley was going to come and talk about snack, but I did want to know maybe a little bit more about if our students are having that in some classes. I kind of, like, if so, is, have we done better? If they are not having it, have they done better adjusting the lunches, or maybe where we're at with that? Yeah. That was one of, one of my topics.
Snack in the classroom is not currently in place. The latest addition is breakfast at all of our school sites, that all of our elementary schools have breakfast in the morning, but there's no snack. And that's currently, that's been in place for longer than most people can remember, so well before I arrived. But it is a topic of discussion right now, as we have been looking at our, how lunches are scheduled, the length of the day, and then talking about a lot of other variety of considerations, like, why was that kind of the rule, the procedure to begin with, particularly because of, you know, students with allergies or allergy management plans? So it is a topic that we have been kind of just discussing and exploring, but no, it is not currently in place. And we also have done some exploration of other school districts as well to see how it's going there and what their procedures or policies look like.
Okay. That's great. As long as we're considering it, thinking about it, talking about it, that's great. You kind of touched on it just a little bit. I was gonna couple that with playtime. I just, I remember registering my oldest for kindergarten and being very anxious about the fact that, that it was full-day kindergarten and there wasn't a lot of playtime, but it was a lot of play-based activity going on. And I haven't stayed as on top of classroom playtime as, as a parent. My kids say they play, but they keep asking for longer recess. And so I know with our schedule the way it is, it's really tight. It's tight. We have a lot of expectations as educators. I was just curious if we have a basic idea of if, what kind of playtime may be happening in the classrooms to allow that development?
Yeah, that's definitely part of a larger conversation. So of all of our readers, you see them all shaking their heads, they've been spending a great deal of time together, having a lot of these conversations. So we are looking at recess time, and of course, there's, you know, the state minimum of 30 minutes, and then we are looking at the requirements for kindergarten, you know, for unstructured play. And then we've been looking at actually the different schedules across all of the buildings, and where are they similar or different? So it is something that's part of this larger, comprehensive review, you know, just simply, you know, with the, the need for movement and brain breaks, and, you know, what is going to most support student engagement, but also, you know, healthy student development. So that is part of the larger conversation right now. Mrs. McCarron, did you want to add anything? Okay.
I was going to talk about my report, but I didn't talk about it now. No, thank you for bringing that up. So we've been trying to do, and you guys probably saw it in my report that went out a couple days ago, but we've been starting to look at our instructional minutes, and part of those things we're coming up to. So what stemmed from looking at, you know, two, two schools with their prep times to see how we make sure we're as equitable as possible for our staff, kind of involved of, let's look district-wide at this, and then it was allocation of minutes. And so the kindergarten, for example, they have 200 ELA minutes, but at one building, maybe it was 75 of wit and wisdom, and another building, it was 85 of wit and wisdom. And then Superintendent Keno is going into classes and weeks apart, but then seeing almost the same topics being discussed. And I'm in curriculum meetings, and I'm, you know, some, some buildings are a couple weeks different, and it's like, oh, well, I have math in the morning, oh, I have it in the afternoon. And like, there was just a lot of, like, different things going on. So we started talking and working with the admin team about what could, what little small steps could we take to start making some movements in the right direction? And we started talking about it, but one thing negatively impacted another, or it did, just didn't work at another building. So we were like, like, let's rip the Band-Aid off and look at this holistically and try to do it right. So we did. We looked at lunch time, recess time, cooperative play included in kindergarten, spacing that out throughout the day, so we have several breaks and stuff. We looked at all of those things, and then kind of prioritizing how, you know, what are the, what are our definite must-haves, and what are the nice-tos, and starting to balance a schedule with that, which is why that instructional minute review came out. We have a tentative idea with some schedules to where all the kindergartens in the district have the same schedule, first grade, second grade, fourth grade. They're the same, so no matter what building you're going to, you'll have the same schedule. So research says when kids travel from a district to district, they can have up to 20% learning loss, right? That, that should be non-negotiable within our district. Somebody should be able to move from a building across town or something and still, and not be negatively impacted with learning. But we can't leave that up to chance, whether, what was scheduled during the day, longer blocks for different buildings and stuff. So we were like, what can we fix? And the admin team was talking, like, let's just have a united schedule that works for everybody. So we started looking at that with prioritizing different CST times throughout the day, so you could have all hands on deck to support kids in small groups. Obviously, we've got one fine arts team, so we, all the fine arts schedules have to be different, can't overlap them. Lunch times, one of our buildings is not built to house more than one grade level of lunch at a time, so putting that in place. So there was a lot of things, but ultimately, they did an amazing job, and it truly was looking at the best interest of students. There was something like PLC time built within the school, they'd be great, but that would have probably consisted of butting two fine arts back-to-back. Well, if we're really talking about what's best for kids, not breaking up their day, yes, it would have been good for teachers and staff to have those, but it was, it really wasn't best, what was best for kids. So they really looked at it through that lens of, of student achievement and growth, what can we do that's best for the kids, and came up with some potential schedules, which is kind of, and snack and lunch included those, because again, spreading those lunches out, so there's not overlap. Somebody might have a little lunch earlier or later in the day, so we might have to have that discussion about snack potentially, if kids are having to, what, you know, state says between 10 and 2, you have to have your lunch. Well, if you're closer to 2 than 10, then you obviously might need a snack in the morning. So we are looking at having some of those conversations, you know, because it's real.
Those are all really hard logistical things to work around, which is why I wasn't really sure where we were at with it. But I know we're doing a lot of work with PLCs, too, and those are the kinds of pieces that fall in place when you get your PLCs settled in.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So I don't, I might jump in real quick, because you brought up a topic that's been on my mind, and what you're talking about is really well-intended and hard work, and there's not an easy solution. We can't turn the page and just, this is what we obviously should do. But when we're talking about, I think you mentioned the equitable outcome for all the students in the district. My concern, I guess I would phrase it, is that we're using the resources that we do have as far as what's best for every student in this specific building. And I'll preface it with, we might have a class size of X and a class size of Y at different buildings. That's already an inaccurate presentation of what's happening. We can't change necessarily that this coming year and next year. That's just the students in the building. So, and what works for everybody might be different in my mind at building to building to building. So for me, it's extremely important that the student in building A is given the best chance to succeed in building A. And that might be connected to building B, but it might not be connected to building B. So I just want to kind of clarify my position that this isn't necessarily a conversation for this moment or for this room, but what's best for students, what we're talking about, probably isn't an extended three, four-hour block of time in a classroom. Probably isn't all of your core subjects either before or after lunch. These things are concepts that need more thought than just, we have to do something. I know that would never be your thought or somebody else's thought. But my, my real concern when you mention it is that, for example, one building might be large enough to do a scaffolded or double lunch. One building might not be able to. We only have the buildings we have and the resources we have. So every student getting the best experience in the building they go to is extremely important to me. And I know we can continue conversations at, you know, nothing, nothing is on the table here. We're just talking. But I just wanted to kind of, since it was mentioned, and, whoa, that was unnecessary, since you were talking about it, it's a huge conversation. And so I really give you all credit for, like you said, ripping the Band-Aid off. But there is a lot there that is unsettling, I think. So we're definitely, all progress is difficult. But I do think that maybe there's something there to consider.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, and so most of the admin have met with most of the teams to kind of show and gather some feedback and thoughts. And staff are coming up with good questions. Hey, did you guys think of this? Well, yes, we did. Or did you think of this? No, we actually didn't, but let's write it down. We're going to talk about it. So those are all points of conversation that we're having, because you're right. What might work for one building may or may not work for the other. But it's like, what are those things that we can have common grounds on together that we can, we can put in place to best serve our students?
I think, appreciate you bringing up in board topic. I know it's something we've been hearing about. And just want to again reiterate to people listening or people in the room that I know that our admin and stakeholders in the buildings have been really having these conversations about what's best in their buildings. Obviously, those that are leading in the buildings and working in the buildings have the best handle on, you know, kind of how things work in their own buildings. So appreciate you bringing that up as it's been a comment we've heard for sure. And just also letting people know that sometimes these topics are things that are being worked on behind the scenes in making sure that we're making, you know, data-driven result, or changes that are leading to results for our students. So appreciate that ability to have that conversation.
And I appreciate the input you guys are giving, and actually you coming today. Didn't know you were showing up to talk about snack and what it was, it's something that we are considering as we are looking at, you know, things that impact our students. Ed committee talked a lot about the, and I see it and hear it in curriculum meetings all the time. The SEL needs of our kids aren't currently being met. So it's like, how can we embed more SEL time into our, like, these are all conversations that are happening, whether it's, you know, BPAC committee, aid committee, ed committee. These are all like just bits, or the coffee and chats with Superintendent Keno. We're pulling on all these pieces and admin coming to PLCs and being, my staff is telling me this. And we're, we're taking this data and pulling it, and that's kind of where we started when we started to look at these things. Is let's look at all this data that we're gathering and what can we do better? And what started out as making some small steps evolved into, we might be able to make some big steps and, and move the needle a little bit faster with some of these things. But if we want to go together, we're going to go slow. If you want to just get it done, you go alone. So we're taking the time to talk with our admin leaders, talk with our staff, to get some support, suggestion, ideas, so that we can move forward in a collaborative, coherent place.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have another one?
I have one more.
Okay.
I just wanted to know, with the laws changing about phones in classrooms, if Menucha 201 currently has a plan in place for how they're going to institute that? Or just, I mean, I don't need to know the plan. I just, not currently anyway. I just wanted to know where we were at with thinking through those sorts of things.
Yeah, absolutely. So we obviously have an awareness and an eye toward the legislation, but also toward the research, what is known about, you know, device usage and screen time and how it impacts children at different ages and how it impacts learning, attention span, all of those aspects. So we have been having those conversations, and there is currently a district policy of off and out of sight, except where it's allowable, right? And so, you know, at the upper grades, there are some spaces or places when it is allowable. And we're even, we've been looking at that with a critical eye this year to say, is this serving our students well? Or is this a detractor? Or is this causing other issues related to whether it's student behavior, student social, emotional, or just student well-being, or staff's ability to instruct and have student engagement? So we are having those conversations. We're looking at it holistically from the whole learning environment. And so particularly at the junior high, we've been talking about daily schedule. Principal Finkelstein and team are, you know, present this evening. They've been having a lot of conversations with their staff since January regarding that whole student schedule, but then also how things are working in our common spaces, including our cafeterias. And then this also includes cell phones and how's this working in classrooms. So we don't have a set plan to communicate yet, but we do know that we want to really enhance the student learning environment. And then, and cell phones, you know, usage or restriction is definitely a component of that. So we'll be able to communicate a clear policy, you know, as we wrap up the year and plan for the next school year.
Thank you.
Anybody else have board topic? I do have one for tonight. We have a reorganization meeting April 29th at 6:00 PM in the boardroom. We're welcoming our new board member, Mr. McGowan, and saying farewell to Mr. Satorius. Mr. Satorius has been on our board for 32 years and was board president for 21 years. And we will be celebrating you as we see you out at the next meeting. But I didn't want to have your last regular meeting go without acknowledging your incredible service to our district. There will be more words coming at the next meeting, so don't you worry. Any other board topics for tonight? All right, we will move on to administrative reports.
Okay, thank you. Definitely quite a busy time of year. As you can see from the reports, there is no shortage of fun and activity and celebration and planning and all of the good stuff going on in our buildings and also at our district level. So I'll ask our district leaders if they have any pieces they'd like to highlight. Mrs. McCarron, do you have anything else you wanted to cover? Okay.
Sorry, Erin, I'll be quick. I just wanted to give a shout out to the instructional coaches. You can see by the list in my report, they're doing amazing work. And they are helping in so many ways with each building, district-wide. They're helping facilitate PLCs. They're actually going to summits over the summer to learn how to kind of take that next step with PLCs. There are some great learning opportunities up at Stevenson School way up north. We're starting to schedule out the new staff curriculum trainings, continuing to push data literacy, and also look at ML trainings and co-teaching possibilities there. So they're just doing an outstanding job. Additionally, Haley Bazan, our district tech coach, has kind of taken the lead on assisting the media teachers. So we have two certified librarians in the district. We're working with them. And Haley's kind of taken the lead on that to really kind of hone in on what our library procurement procedure is going to look like moving forward. So we're meeting with them in May to kind of finalize that. Additionally, working with Dr. Staub, I know that a summer reading program has kind of been important in addition to what we do with our summer programs. So actually, Erica Martinez, our multilingual director, has some history with working with an app that can actually work within all of our buildings for reading programs, some competitiveness nature, summer reading. So we're looking into that a little bit too. But the other thing I wanted to note was the Menucha 201 Comprehensive Literacy Plan. So we have a plan drafted, been able to take all the data pieces and all the different literacy strands, looking at pros and cons and strengths and weaknesses and opportunity and threats that we have from our littlest learners to our oldest ones as they graduate eighth grade from us. And just really having a keen eye onto what's working, what's not, what type of benchmarks in terms of literacy that the state is suggesting we have, whether we have them or not, what we need to include. So they are looking at the draft of the plan, and I will probably come to you in May with the actual plan to review. But it's focusing on the three key goals that the state has deemed necessary in a literacy plan, where every student receives high-quality, evidence-based literacy instruction. Goal two is that every educator is prepared and continuously supported to deliver high-quality, evidence-based literacy instruction. So Whitton Wisdom utilizes a science of reading approach. Even though science of reading has been around for a while, we're still seeing there's not a lot of kids coming out of, from college with that preparedness. So what can we do for our staff who are coming to us and are already here and have made that shift of maybe balance literacy to science of reading? And then goal three is every leader is equipped to create, maintain, and sustain equitable conditions for high-quality, evidence-based literacy instruction. So we're already starting some things in place to work on these goals, but we really kind of have different action items laid out in our Comprehensive Literacy Plan that I'm excited to kind of bring to you next month. That's all, unless you guys have questions. Good? Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the technology update, unless anyone has a, an update that they'd like to highlight? Admin? Thank you. Keep up the great work. All right, technology.
Oh, all right. There we go. So last, or did any of you recall?
We adopted Parent Square as our one, one district, one app, new communication platform and tool. So the good news about that is we're already working really hard on it. A quick shout out to Dave and Pam for getting a lot of our data, parent information already loaded in there, rosters and things like that. So with that, we have an early adopter program going right now with over 40 teachers currently starting to use it. We're starting to learn a little like, how do you do this? How do you do that? And as we're discovering questions, we're building an FAQ, like, training document, both for staff and parents. And we already have a lot of good usage already. You know, and this kind of just hearkens back to Strategic goal four, you know, strengthen family community engagement, communication collaboration, or I like to call storytelling. And here's an example of what we're already doing so far with just our small pilot kind of teachers. Posts are basically like classroom announcements, like all, all student or parent emails in your class. And then direct messaging is like the one-on-one messaging of, hey, your student did really well today, or Adam forgot his homework yesterday, you know, that kind of a one-on-one messaging that goes private back and forth. What's great about this is with those messaging, messages, a parent ideally can use the actual smartphone app. But if you don't, you can still respond via email and I'll like tuck back into the conversation thread. So as a parent or teacher, you can just have a nice, long chain of conversations with each other instead of like when a teacher emails home about like a chapter four test, but then a parent responds to that from like a chapter one test email, everything gets all, you know, convoluted and complicated. So so far, the feedback's been really positive, both from the teacher's side and even I'm hearing trickle-up kind of parent comments like, hey, this is actually kind of nice. I can toggle between my kids and keep everything kind of nice and interesting. So so far, so good. As we're putting, as we're learning, as we go, we're going to be turning on building-wide announcements hopefully later this week. And we're already working into, how do you handle like those special groups like the Beta Club or eventually sport teams? So then again, as a parent, if you've got three kids and two are in Menucha Sports, eventually we'll get all the communication like one app instead of like See, Sal, Remind, Dojo and all that other stuff. So it's going well so far. We're really pumped up and we're just gathering information so that we can have the best chance of a successful, you know, August launch.
So real quick with that, what's on the screen? If you get an email from your student's teacher in your email, it's to the class, is that, would that be considered a post?
Most likely that'd be a post because it goes out to everybody. The direct messaging is usually like a one-on-one conversation.
Just one-on-one, okay. Thank you.
So yeah, so far, just really looking forward to it. And I think, you know, come this time next year, we're going to look back and say like, this was a good, good call is my, is my goal and anticipation as we prepare for next school year launch. That being said, we're into tis the season for registration. The pink line is have not started registration. The dark blue is submitted registration. So we are trending in the right direction. As you can tell, like the big sharp decline is like when we launched. And then the other dip around 2, 2800 to 2600, I think, is when we did another targeted reminder, basically like, hey, are you coming back to Menucha 201 next year? Let us know. So we'll be ramping that up, probably like weekly emails and text messages, you know, for the remainder of like probably this school year, maybe even hitting like twice a week, but targeting people. So, you know, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Shaneberg has registered or not, but if he hasn't, we'll kind of keep messaging him. But if Ms. Conquest has, we're not going to keep bugging her. Not, alright, there we go. So that's kind of our communication plan to get, you know, so then district and building leadership can make the best possible plans we can with knowing, you know, who's coming back and resources needed for registration. So.
So first I lost my homework and now I didn't register.
Wah wah. Yeah. All right.
So do we have any gut feeling for involvement for next year? Are we going to stay at that 40-300, you think, or?
Yeah, we are, we're pretty stable right now. And looking at the cohorts, we're going to see a little bit of a natural dip because that outgoing eighth grade class is one of, is a larger class, and then some of our smaller classes are rolling up. We are monitoring very closely. Kindergarten is always the wild card. We have about 79 new registrations right now. You don't see that in the numbers there, but we're going to push to get an awareness to register kindergarten early. And then keep in mind, our primary center enrollment, that's ongoing enrollment. So you don't see that in the numbers initially, but that will climb. The other point is that every single village that we are a part of has new residential development kicking off. So we are working closely with the villages in the new development, particularly in Shorewood. But Menucha and Shanahan and Joeliet are also actively rolling with residential development. So we will be monitoring that very closely. That will be a topic of much discussion at future board workshops and committee meetings, finance, and so forth. So we could have another gradual climb based on that residential development.
Lastly, unfortunately, we had that kind of big technology shuffle. We're losing or have lost 30% of the team in two months with Afim, Sam, and Jeff leaving in March to May. We have identified, we promoted Matt from Within and hired John to take over at Wall of Trails. And we're collecting applications right now at the junior high for his replacement. Truthfully, I would love to kind of tell you like, oh man, these guys all got stolen by Troy 30C or Menucha High School. But no, they all got offered like Gots-to-go opportunities that I truly wish them well. Certainly, they all will be missed, but we're doing the best we can and we feel pretty confident with the hires we've had so far. Lastly, whenever we have like a position open up like this where, so Matt was a district technician, kind of promoted him, taking a step back to kind of reevaluate, what can we tweak, alter? So for the new position, you know, so we can position it for the best chance of success in supporting our teaching and learning here at the district. So we'll probably have some tweaks to that before we post it so we can get the best possible candidate externally or internally. But yeah, just kind of rough a couple of months for me, just on managerial side of the world. But we're doing okay and we're keep chugging forward. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I think we're good.
Adam said that he'll help out.
All right.
Yeah, but keep in mind, I didn't register and don't have my homework. So you probably don't want my help.
All right. I think that we've covered a lot of ground tonight. The only one update that I will add is that at the last board meeting, the board did approve the new architect of record and the facilities assessment is underway. So we kicked it off right, the March 18th, the day after that board meeting. And they were in buildings, doing building blocks, internal exterior assessments, including drones and everything. And then the next phase now they're entering is the meeting.
And then the next phase now they're entering is the meetings with individual building and department leaders. So we're working toward having that comprehensive gathering of data to then bring that to a head with developing a plan, and that's part of that whole connection with obviously monitoring enrollment trends, but then also looking at maintaining current facilities and identifying needs and connecting that to the fiduciary aspect as well. So lots of work underway behind the scenes as well, and we are continuing to plug along.
Have you, has they, have they found anything that we did not know about, like anything hidden in the walls or that? The wall might be crumbling or something.
There has been no like alarms going off, like, hey, look at this, you know, but it's probably a lot of things that we had some awareness of, you know, related to whether it be HVAC or roofs and mechanicals and things of that nature. Anything that's health, life, safety, or like an imminent, like, you know, concern, we would know about immediately. So no, we don't have anything on the list of that, and so we will, they update us periodically. Mary, I know you have a meeting this week or next week, and so we're working closely with them, so we'll have, we'll be able to give you a summary, but nothing that's, you know, screaming at us. But our team does a good job with what we have, and we're just now thinking longer term and that kind of aspect of maintaining our facilities.
Any other questions for Superintendent Kinder? All right, if not, we will have executive session with no planned action after. I need a motion to go to executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, confidential student matter, and superintendent evaluation.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries.